What is?
So what is my password? Oh, Mr. Roger, thank you. Oh goodness. I didn't do that one.
Everyone would take their seats, please. Happy New Year. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, nine AM Wednesday, January third, twenty twenty four, meeting. We're going to begin our meeting with our invocation. I'd like to ask if Pastor Hines will come forward. Pastor Hines, also, would you say a special prayer for the Spalding County Deputy and his family, the deputy that was killed this past holiday? If you would say a prayer for him and the department and his family. Thank you. If everyone would stand.
Good morning, let's pray. Father, we come to thee today, and we're grateful that you've given us another year to serve. And Lord, may we, this year, become dependent upon thee, but yet enter dependent in the task before us. May you bless that. Lord, this morning, I lift up the Spalding County Police Department, those officers that are grieving in the loss of a comrade. And Lord, I ask especially for his family and his loved ones, friends, that you would comfort them as only you can do. I pray you'd bathe them with your spirit, lead and guide and comfort. And Lord, may you just watch over that entire community. Lord, as we look to this year, we ask you for great things, that you'd bless our great county. I lift up all of our public safety, serving here and there today to protect us and keep us safe. And Lord, yet all of those that labor in the vineyards, in the offices, in the places, that you would bless them and their families. So we look to thee this year, for thy hand to be upon us, and Lord, as we look toward great and mighty things this year. Bless this meeting and all that transpires, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
I'd like to call our meeting to order. There's going to be an amendment to the agenda, we're going to add executive session for personnel matters. And then we need to remove the human resources. The resolution for the Commissioners to amend and adopt the Association ACCG benefit plan, we're gonna move it to the regular agenda. So if I could have the county manager, oh, I'm sorry. Also, the following planning and zoning item was advertised for the January third, twenty twenty four Board of Commissioners meeting, it has been postponed by staff. We have appointments to the Board of Health for a six-year term for Dr. Crystal Slate from Southern Creston's Women Health. Can I get a motion to approve that appointment? Got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor. Motion carries. Next is the appointment of the hospital authority nominee, submittal, two terms, two expired terms. Dr. Gupta and Mike Gasses' terms have expired. And you see the names listed here. The BLC has to submit three nominees for each expired term. Dr. Gupta was, name was resubmitted, Sam Lorenzo and Dr. Ch- Choshi. And then for the other term, Mike Gasses, Lindsey McGarrity and Karen Stevens. Can I get a motion to approve the hospital authority nominees?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second, all in favor. Okay, motion carries. Now we have the consent agenda, if we could have our county manager to please come forward and read the consent agenda.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, this is your consent agenda for Wednesday, January third, twenty twenty four. Under the county manager, we have a resolution approving the purchase of real property at Selfridge Road, Hampton, Georgia, ninety-six point six-three-three-plus-or-minus acres for the future expansion of the Atlanta Speedway Airport in the amount of four point one million dollars. Under the Department of Transportation, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, awarding bid number twenty-four dash one-nine to Backbone Infrastructure LLC for the construction of Jodico Road Right Turn Lane in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars, to be funded from Developer escrow and by Henry County DOT budget. Under Emergency Management Agency, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, accepting a donation of CPR mannequins and equipment from the LZ family to Henry County Emergency Management and Homeland Security. The mannequins and equipment are valued at an estimated one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. Under Financial Services, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, declaring vehicles, furniture and equipment, which is listed on Exhibit A and B, as surplus and authorizing the disposal, trade-in or sale of said items. Under the Fire Rescue, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, declaring items as surplus and authorizing the disposal of said non-operational outdated equipment, listed on Exhibit A, from Henry County Fire Rescue Training Ground. Under Planning and Zoning, we have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for here in Bay Pod L, Phase One, located in District One. We have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for Reserve at Calcutta, Phase One A subdivision on Millers Mill Road, located in District Four. We also have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for Reserve at Calcutta, Phase One B subdivision on Millers Mill Road, located in District Four. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution to accept donations from FLET-C, which is the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center, to assist the Henry County Police Department with training, supplies and equipment. We have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, awarding bid number twenty-four dash one-six to Bellamy Automotive Group, Inc., for six twenty twenty-four Chevrolet Silverados, fifteen hundred PPV vehicles to be purchased at a cost of three hundred and three thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars by the Henry County Police Department, utilizing red speed funds. We also have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, approving bid award number twenty-four dash one-five to Dana Safety Supply, Inc., for the installation of lights and sirens equipment for six twenty twenty-four Chevrolet Silverados, fifteen hundred vehicles, in the amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars for the Henry County Police Department, utilizing red speed funds. Under SPOS, we have a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Stockbridge for improvements of Patrick Henry Parkway. This project will utilize T-SPOS funds, but in addition, the City of Stockbridge will contribute three-tenths of the project, not to exceed five hundred and forty thousand dollars. We also have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, approving a lighting service agreement with Georgia Power for the installation, maintenance and energy costs for the lighting of Mill Road, installation of lights, a hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, utilizing T-SPOS funds and maintenance and energy monthly costs of nine hundred and twelve dollars and five cents, utilizing Henry County DOT streetlight funds. We have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, approving RFP number twenty-four dash zero-eight, which is an award for the design and installation of interstate signs to Wright Light Signs, Inc., in the amount of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars. And we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, approving the bid award of McDonough Parkway at State Route Twenty to Backbone Infrastructure, in the amount of two million, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. Under Stormwater, we have a resolution approving the bid award for construction services for the drainage improvements for Southola Road to Backbone Infrastructure LLC, in the amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand, twelve, utilizing Stormwater Enterprise Funds. Under Technology Services, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to purchase two replacement UPS battery backups for backup site server room location in the amount of sixty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars from Schneider Electric. Under Transit, we have a resolution authorizing consent to apply for the FTA G dot fifty-three-eleven FY twenty-five grant application for rural public transportation operating and capital assistance. Henry County's total amount of operating allocation for this program is one million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine, of which, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents, is the fifty percent federal portion, and the local match portion of fifty percent is also nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. The capital allocation for this program is two hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighteen, of which, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-four is the eighty percent federal portion, twenty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty cents is the ten percent state portion, and the local match portion of ten percent is also twenty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty cents. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Anglin, I think that you had a question with regards to one of the items on the agenda.
One second. Under Financial Services, for the surplus and disposal, there is a Ford F-one-fifty twenty twenty-one, it only had about twenty-one thousand miles on it. And I'm assuming that was maybe a wrecked vehicle? I'm just kinda asking why twenty twenty-one with twenty-one thousand miles was...
So it, Ms. Lundbuntain has indicated that was a complete total. The county was not at fault, but it is a total vehicle.
That's what I figured. Okay, thank you, that's the only question.
Okay, any questions from anyone else on the board? Here are none, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Department of Transportation, David Simmons.
Good morning, Chair, good morning, Board, Happy New Year. This is an item, a resolution approving an outdoor lighting agreement with Central Georgia EMC for a non-revenue streetlight at the intersection of State Route Forty-two and John R. Williams Parkway, in the amount of fifteen dollars per month. The DOT, we've received requests to place a streetlight at this intersection, and basically, it's to improve the visibility of the intersection and operation of the intersection. I'll say the intersection has two concrete islands in it, and I think occasionally cars, tires tend to find one of the islands, if not both. And in the past, just as info, Georgia DOT has done some striping there, since it's in Forty-two's right away. So this lighting is to assist with that. And we contacted Central Georgia EMC to review the request and provide a cost for lighting. And EMC has provided outdoor lighting agreement to be executed by the county with a lighting cost of fifteen dollars per month. And I put on this slide just kinda what I view a non-revenue streetlight as, it's just what I've always heard of the term, but it's it's normally your lighting a particular location, rather than, say, lights within a subdivision, on subdivision streets. It's often near an signalized intersection to provide lighting for visibility, safety purposes. And non-revenue light, the lighting's paid out DOT's budget, it's not something that would be assessed on property owners, which you can more quantify for subdivision lighting. Here, you really cannot quantify it. And again, it's fifteen dollars a month. That's the intersection right there. If you ever go down Forty-two towards Locust Grove, you see the red jet, it's right near there. And this is a street view. The intersection's on the left, and you can kinda sorta see the second island, which I think is more of an issue at night. There is a light probably a hundred and fifty feet away, but it doesn't really throw enough light there, nor does the convenience store. I went out and checked it in the dark, and it's still a pretty dark intersection, so. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, David, so I do have a question. We have several areas in the county that are probably similar to this, how is this selected out of? I mean, I'm sure you get calls about different areas. Is there a way to develop some type of priority list of how we're going to do lighting in the county? I know we've had this discussion before, and I just wanna know how this particular project got here, and we've got probably several other areas within the county.
Yeah, and I'll say, more than likely, on the next board meeting, I'll have another one that came from Citizen, and it's up off Gardner Road. But normally, it just comes when I get requests. This one, I do think, came through District One, but I think it came from Citizens through him to us. I meant to get a number, but I probably have, I would guess, rough number, fifty of these in the county that I pay for, on all three power companies. So there's no real set one, we just get the request, and we try and take a look at the intersection to determine if it appears dark. I know in the past, we've had questions about lighting corridors, and we certainly would like to get some sort of policy for that. And, you know, if we get enough of these, sure, we should do that, but it's mainly just based off a request and a visual of a visual to document that it does appear to be a concern. I have more of a concern when it's lighting with houses around, 'cause sometimes we get complaints from people that the light's throwing in through their living room window or bedroom window. This, there's none at this particular area. But no matter, there's no set current process for these individual lighting areas.
So County Manager, is this something that you all can look into? Because how do you determine, I mean, like, his budget is his budget, and so when it gets to a level of he no longer has money to be able to do this, we have lighting issues around throughout this, the county. And so, some that might even be more high priority than this. So I just think that we need to get something in place to deal with the lighting issues that we have at dangerous intersections.
Yes, ma'am, what we will do is bring back a policy. You are correct that we did, I believe, last year, or maybe year before last, bring forth a resolution for the board to approve, to authorize us to go out and set forth a criteria. If there are a number of accidents, you've gotta have a policy in place, because if not, what you're gonna have is the one-offs like we're having. So we will certainly commit to bring back to the board, we'll bring two options. Either have our staff go out and try to identify, or bring back the resolution where we actually had a company that was going to go out and do an assessment and identify areas that needed lighting install. But we will bring that back. Give me about thirty days, because if we do utilize a company, then I'll have to do a proposal. But let me talk to staff internally and see if it's something that we can do internally, but we will bring that back.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I think we have addressed some of these issues with the newer developments in the county, with the overlays that are in place, is that correct?
Well, the overlays is more about lighting typically for that pedestrian path is often required. This would be more for probably just strictly trying to light the intersection better than what it's currently illuminated, so. These are different, and I'll say, you know, every year, yes, we do request to adjust our budget. Probably the, I don't know what the earlier consent agenda ones were, but those are certainly typically more dollars per month off of my budget than the singular intersection, non-revenue light. But it's something we adjust for and typically bump up year to year, the more lights we take on, we see how it does against our budget, and we try and adjust for the next year accordingly. But no matter, the corridor overlay, it probably provides some lighting, and it may assist some, but I don't know that it would absolutely take care of every intersection that could be considered.
So I'm thinking about new developments that are coming, how we can incorporate what Chair is asking to be done, a policy to make sure that we address it early into the process, and then maybe you will have to address it once it's completed. So when you all are looking at that, County Manager and your staff, please think about how we can address these issues and intersections that are early in the process. I'm thinking like on Willow Lane, they're cutting it up, so I don't know what's going on sometime. You gotta cut here, cut there, cut, and I can see in a few, we just got the traffic light up in Jonesboro Road in a few months, getting a lot of requests for some changes there. So it'd be great if we can do it on the front end, that's what I'm asking to look at.
Yes, ma'am, I would say, like to say, the corridor lighting is kind of a different animal. It's something we did get a proposal on a while back, what we didn't have, it wasn't necessarily in anybody's particular budget, so I think it got held up, so.
And thank you.
Commissioner Robinson.
I guess you know what I'm gonna be speaking on. We've constantly talked about Valley Hill Road, and I've been requesting that even as a citizen since twenty sixteen. So I just wanna know what level is your qualifications to be able to have the street lighting in place?
I think maybe on Valley Hill, it might be more of corridor, which that's, for instance, Jonesboro Road, the board approved its corridor lighting, that's eight thousand dollars a month out of our budget, and we light it from roughly Target to the Clayton County line. So the corridor lightings are certainly a different item to address versus typically a fifteen to twenty dollar per month light near one particular area. But, and I need to check back in on that, on the request to assist the city with any sort of look into lighting on Valley Hill. I'm not sure what we've, I'm not aware of receiving something back, so we will follow back up on that and reach out to the city to, you know, to help them along.
Is this something that Georgia Power can also assist us with, if we bring them to the table?
Yes, that's kinda how we've done it before, is if you're looking to do a corridor, it's just a request of looking, can you give us an estimate on what you think it'd take to light this corridor of this particular road and provide a cost for that?
Provide some clarification, when you say assist, the only thing they're gonna do is identify where those lights need to be placed and what the costs of the county would be. There's no programs where they will pay the upfront costs, and then the county comes back at a later date. One of the things we also have to be very cognizant of is a lot of these roadways fall within the cities, and so I think that's what David is saying, that if there is a desire where you have a county-city road, then there should be some shared cost between not only the county, but the city in which it falls within.
Thank you, and I also wanna go back, so, 'cause I clearly stated twenty sixteen. So this was in the county before the city annex, so I just wanna make sure we're clear on that. We have spoken with the city, and I wanna continue these conversations, because again, District Two was, at the time, was District Five, was neglected, so now it's time for me to make sure that we're... Um, so now it's time for me to make sure that we're cleaning this up and getting it done, even if the partnership. And I'm grateful that the city is willing to do that as well. But I do again, want to say twenty sixteen, when I was requesting. There was no, um, annexation or any of that. It belonged to the county at the time. So I just want my colleagues to understand those are the conversations that I will be having. Um, because again, I personally since twenty sixteen was requesting that from Henry County government. Okay? So if we can get together, Sherry and David, um, to discuss, I guess, later this morning, if you have time. Or if not, let's schedule some time so we can discuss it further on certain areas that I know that we need to pay a lot of attention to.
Right. And if I may add in, I know a year or two ago, the board at that time had asked, let's get prices on lighting this corridor and that corridor. And, and I think we got those prices, but then, then it got into, how's it going to get paid for? So that kind of led into trying to get a consultant to, uh, establish that, but also it lacked budget. So it's a case, I would say, at least partly of trying to line up the funds to back these sort of things up to get them moving forward.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And I'd just like to have them prioritized because you have had some community, some areas. You know, we, we need to put some type of, uh, criteria as to what is considered. You know, a real safety hazard as opposed to, I just want a light at this intersection, lighting at, at, at an intersection.
Right.
Especially if we're having to pay for it. If it's coming out of your budget.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, then it needs to be prioritized. And so, um, I would say before you bring any others before us, you need to get with the County Manager. And let's see, um, how we move forward from here.
All right.
So, um, you all heard it. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire rescue. Can I get Fire Chief Jonathan Burnett to come forward?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members. Uh, before we get started on this, I just want to take a couple of seconds, uh, and make a few announcements. Twenty twenty-four Henry County Fire Rescue, uh, is happy to announce we're celebrating our fiftieth year anniversary as an established service. And I'd like to thank all the current and past employees, uh, for help paving the road for, to get where we are, um, today. This contract, um, will continue that service as we continue to move forward. As we finished out twenty twenty-three, our last numbered showed we had a call for service from the community. Uh, every fifteen minutes, every fifteen minutes we ran one point one calls. And that doesn't mean that just one singular truck goes. That means somebody in the community called nine one one and asked for our help. Uh, every fifteen minutes, one point one calls. Uh, so we finished the year averaging about a hundred and five calls a day. Said that just to say we're busy and we're only getting busier. Uh, and that leads right into what we're going to talk about today. Um, today we're here to present a resolution, uh, approving the contract with ten eight Fire Safety LLC. To initiate an annual replacement program for all fire rescue vehicles, including engines, ladder trucks, squads, tankers and ambulances. Utilizing capital funds. An operational need has been identified by Henry County Fire Rescue for an annual replacement program for all fire rescue vehicles, including engines, ladders. Squads, which are heavy rescue vehicles, tanker trucks and ambulances. Ten eight Fire Safety Equipment LLC is the local vendor for fire rescue apparatus, has provided the attached annual replacement contracts, uh, for said apparatus. The attached contract was made under the MPP, um, MPP Gov, a fire rescue GPO contract. And then capital funds will need to be identified each year for the purchases. I know this is kind of hard to read, but this kind of lays out a timeline, uh, of, for the next five to six years of what we would buy and then what would be replaced. Um, the only one adjustment that needs to be made to this, uh, because this has been in the works for so many months. Is that all these numbers would just be bumped up by one year. Uh, that's the only adjustment that would need to be made to that. But it shows, um, starting off in twenty twenty-three, again, which would be twenty twenty-four, and then each year would just be adjusted, uh, and bumped up from that. This program, um, keeps us at the status quo at replacing what we currently have. It also includes the equipment, um, for the station seventeen and eighteen that has been previously approved also. Uh, those are placed in there, uh, on the timeline of ordering as to when we're going to get the equipment and when the station's going to start to be built. I know that we've talked about, uh, for many, many years about having a true apparatus replacement program and what that looks like. Uh, and that's what I'm happy to present to you here today. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Oh, that's it?
Yes ma'am.
Oh, okay. Um, okay. So any questions from, from the board? I'm sorry. I just. Uh, Commissioner Wilson.
All right. Thank you, Chief. You're right. This would need to be done a while back and thank you for bringing that to us. Hopefully we can make this program work moving forward. So my question to the County Manager. Can we purchase any of these vehicles with the overages of SPOSS five?
So because we did not specify, um, fire apparatus in our SPOSS five program, it would not be eligible.
But in there though, it says fleet replacement though.
So we have used, utilized those fleet replacement plans for other purchases. Um, we can check, but I do not believe that we'll have enough funding available for that. Um, if there is funding available, then yes, it would be allowable. But because we did not specify in our SPOSS five, um, fire apparatus, it would not be. We do have a SPOSS six program that is on the horizon. And so this would be at that point, we could add these projects. So that we would have another funding source available. So it would be an eligible expense under SPOSS six.
So if we had the funding available in SPOSS five, we could purchase these vehicles if there was overages available.
Under the fleet replacement. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Um, I just, I just want to say I don't want to commend, uh, Chief and also the County Manager. Um, these are the types of things that, and you're absolutely correct. These things should have been done many moons ago. So I, I just want to commend the current leadership of the county for putting things in place that we're going to need years from now. Um, for a county of our size, these are the types of, of things that you probably, most people probably assume were already in place, but they're not. Um, you shouldn't have to come before the Board of Commissioners every other month to ask to buy a vehicle. Those, or a ladder truck, those things should already be in place. And frankly, um, not having them in place puts us at a disadvantage. When we need to buy apparatus because we get put on the back burner when it comes to, you know, the, the companies that are actually building these out. Because they're going to go to the people who already have a contract in place first before they do it for us. So, um, well needed. Thank you for, for leading the charge. I thank you County Manager for getting these programs in place. These are things we, we should have had a long time ago. So I appreciate it.
Um, so. Yes, go ahead.
Financial services, I think. Um, my only concern, and I'm for the contract, by the way, I want to be very clear on that. Is if we go into a contract and the funding sources are not available upon delivery, what does that look like? Will we have those funding sources available to be able to enter into this contract and make good on it on our end? And that may need to be for David, that may need to be for Sherry, or that may need to be a question to be answered later.
So, so whenever we have, um, contracts, one of the things that we have to do is in that upcoming fiscal year budget. Is we have to set aside those must have contract dollar amounts. Um, one of the things I was speaking to the county attorney about is the current contract is, it indicates a five year, which the county cannot enter into a five year contract. And so she will have to add language, um, to give us some coverage in terms of what we can do. Um, what I understood from the county attorney is that we can do a year to year in terms of the fiscal year or calendar year. But she will go in and incorporate the appropriate language for that. But to answer more specifically your question is when we start developing our FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Um, within our budget, we have a capital line item, which we will have to make sure that funding is available for these purchases if the board approves it. Um, what Mr. Chief Burnett has indicated is we now have at least the next five years what we intend to purchase. This is strictly a timeline. Um, part of our CIP will have to be amended to incorporate, um, these purchases. Which means there may be some items that may have to come out, um, because one, we've got to make sure that we maintain our mileage rate. Or we've got to start having conversations with you all on what that mileage rate needs to look like. Do we need to start looking at a public safety mileage rate so that we can ensure that these capital expenses are being purchased? And so those are a lot of things that myself and our financial team will have to have some internal conversations about. And believe it or not, we will start those conversations this month in terms of where we're going to be financially, what we expect our collections to be, and how we will fund these projects. Commissioner Lewis made a good point. We are competing with other jurisdictions to get the apparatus. There are some jurisdictions that can quickly get the apparatus because they have contracts in place. They know that we're going, they're going to be guaranteed that the county is going to replace that equipment. And so what we're trying to do is just catch up. Um, but, but good point in terms of making sure that we do have the finances available. And if the board says this is something that we want to do, we've got to make sure that within our budget, um, we're able to afford it. Which again, could mean that we cut some other items.
So a follow-up for you, Sherry, if you don't mind. Uh, this may be for our County Attorney. You mentioned that we can only go into a year to year contract on these items. Is there something where we can address so that way we, uh, secure the vehicles for a longer period of time? Meaning like a three or five year contract? Is that something that we can change within our accounting, um, ordinances?
And, and, and before you answer, um, County Attorney, we have entered into three year contracts before. So what makes this, I can, I understand the five year piece, but why can't we enter at least to a three year with two year annual renewals?
The state statute that governs multi-year contracts, um, for counties and for municipalities. Um, that statute requires that every term, even if you have multiple years in the term. Each year, the contract either has to expire at the end of the calendar year in which the contract was entered. Or at the end of a fiscal year. And the purpose of that provision is to prevent binding successor, um, commissions. Or councils, um, in the case of a municipality. So you can still have the multiple terms, but the county as a public body needs to have the flexibility to terminate. In case there's a situation where the funds are not available, um, to fulfill a contract.
So I, I guess my question, uh, again goes back to, I know that this board has approved. Three year contracts with annual renewals. Is that something that we can do on this particular contract?
And the county can certainly do that, but we have to make sure that we have the statutorily required. Language in the contract so that it's actually a legal contract.
Okay. All right. Uh, Commissioner Thomas.
My question is, I noticed that we're constantly talking about purchasing the equipment. Will this be leased equipment or purchase equipment? Because one of the things we talked about was getting on some type of lease program so that your equipment, when it ages out. We're not buying again and buying again, but we're just able to turn in that lease and bring in new equipment on, on another lease. So are we now doing that with this company or is this for the purchase of equipment?
But from my understanding, both of those options are available. So how we buy it is kind of up to us. What this does is just basically establishes, as County Manager mentioned, us in a priority in the production line, uh, through the companies. So right now there's a thirty-six to forty-month extended wait time ordering an apparatus today. So what, basically what this does is just puts us in a, in a priority line, uh, in, in their production. So how we, how we buy them, they don't really care whether it's through a lease program or, or outright. You do get certain advantages if you buy them outright, but it costs more money upfront. Um, but how we actually purchase the equipment, that's kind of up to us.
Well, I'd like to see that reflected in the documents to give us that option. Because that's one of the things we're trying to do for all our vehicles from what we talked about in conversations before. Is to make sure we have aggressive leasing programs. And I don't mean something relaxed, but something aggressive. Whereas as equipment ages, instead of us having to try to put them in surplus. Or to try to go out and purchase again, we can turn in that equipment and get upgraded equipment. So I'd definitely like to see that placed, that language in there so that we can use the lease option. As we replace our fleets. And the next thing I noticed in the document, it talked about record management, that it will be placed on the, the contract. It will maintain and prepare and maintain the record files of parts and assemblies. I want to make sure in the contract or whatever we, we put before them, that we have direct access to that information. And not just depend upon them to maintain the file, but we have access and there should be a backup of that information. Somewhere in our computer system. So if there's any type of concern about the age of a piece of equipment or was it put on? You know how we saw these, these accidents these days and they go back and try to trace every net and boat? We have access to that information directly.
We, we, we actually do. Uh, that's been something that we've had for, for many years that sets Pierce specifically apart from other, um, manufacturers. Is, you know, you can have a twenty-year-old piece of equipment, you can call them up, give them the build number, they can instantly go to that file, pull the specs. Rebuild a, a piece of equipment if needed to specifically for that type of apparatus. Uh, so that is in place and has been actually utilized by us many times in the past.
Okay. I'm just looking at the way it's written here. So I just wanted to make sure the language is clear so that you do have clear access.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay then, so, um, County Attorney, um, from the comments up here, we just want to make sure that we have, uh, in the contract. That there is a, a lease option and that we have access to, uh, all records and files. Noted that. Okay. Um, I think this is, is a great plan. I think this is something that we, we talked about this for the last year, you and I, Chief Burnett. And, you know, I'm glad that you all were able to get together and, and put this together and bring it before the board. So now I'd like to call for a motion to approve, uh, this resolution.
Motion to approve with the, uh, uh, comments and amendments stated by the chair.
Okay, got a motion, got a motion and a second. No, no further discussion. All in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I think we have one other item that we need to bring forth. H R, Holly.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. H R brought to the board about a month ago for discussion only. Down. A proposal to give our retirees a two percent COLA. And I just wanted to kind of go over that with you today. The reason that we want to bring this is because, as everybody knows, inflation has outpaced the spending power of our retirees' payments. And the average rate of inflation was eight percent in twenty twenty-two. It dropped to one, four point one in twenty-three, but it's currently at two point seven. And our goal as a county or as, as H R is not to have inflation drain the value from our retirement benefits provided to all of our employees. Um, I'm sure that one of the questions, where are the money going to come from? It's going to cost approximately two hundred forty-one thousand in additional cost to do this COLA for our retirees. However, because of the resolution that you passed last month, the county's contributions that are going towards retirement plan as base pay only. Um, that's going to save us at least six hundred thousand and that's being, um, conservative. We've came, we came up with eligibility. Um, we will bring this back. Staff will bring this back to the board every other year. To request a COLA for our retirees. After H R and finance has vetted it, then we'll make a recommendation to, uh, County Manager. The retiree has to have been retired for at least two years. So this first one, you will have to have been retired December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three for two years. And then that same calendar will move forward with it. And this one will go into effect February of twenty-four. And this one will go into effect February of '24. And then again, on even years is our proposal moving forward. This chart is a little hard to read because of the colors, but it does show, um, the averages of our retirees, the numbers that we're having retire. And it's around 40 to 50 a year. That fluctuates for a number of reasons, but, um, kind of shows the averages that are, are going up as the years go on. So any questions?
So this was brought, brought to us, like you said, about a month ago. There was a lot of conversation around it. Are there any questions from the board?
I just have one question, if you don't mind. Um, I just want to make sure that we're supposed to approve this each even year before the 2% takes effect, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, all, it, can I get a motion to approve?
Sure.
Got a motion? Can I get a second? No further discussion. All in favor. All opposed?
Ma'am, I have to recuse myself. I'm currently a retiree. This is part of the pension.
Okay. Um, you got that, Stephanie? Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Stephanie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Our next upcoming board meeting is, is January 16th. It'll be a regular scheduled board meeting. January 16th, 3:00 PM is a call workshop meeting. February 6th at 9:00 AM is a regular scheduled board meeting. Uh, we're going to, uh, can I get a motion for us to move into executive session?
To move.
Got a, got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor. We'd like to reconvene from executive session. Can I get a motion? Second? All in favor? Need to approve the affidavit from executive session? Can I get a motion?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Motion carries. Stephanie, is there anything else that I need to do?
No, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Meeting is adjourned.